Today is Tuesday, October 11th at 4:00 PM. It's a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. There's a motion to call the meeting to order. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Please rise and place the lead. Gentlemen, I don't know if you've had a chance to look through the meeting minutes.
We'll put him back on.
Okay.
Fix him up a little bit this morning, so we'll put him back on for next time.
Table, meeting minutes.
No. She just finished it.
Oh, it's table. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item. Under DPW. Hi, Dan, how's it going? You're looking to fill a position?
Yes, I am. So we kind of went through like thirty out things. Probably about four or five interviews. We wound up coming with this guy, Tyler, and figured we're looking for you guys bussing and hopefully we can move forward.
We went through all the background checks, the Cory, the Sori.
Yep.
Physical drug tests.
Yeah, you already went through that, so. Tyler, want to come up? Tyler? We could meet the board. All right, Mr. Gasper?
How we doing? About how we are? Was his chairman? He's Mr. Hincklin?
Yes, well.
And this is our town official, which you already met.
We've met. We've talked a couple times.
All right. It looks like you're an Acushnet resident, which is great.
Yes, sir.
I know you take a great pride in the town and want to do a great job, so that's awesome. Glad to, well, gentlemen, it's a great background and all those applicants.
Just a couple of quick for Dan. So we have this notice here that's written up by Mr. Kelly, but it says the CDL get to obtain your CDL, wants to acquire a CDL license during this period, which is the six month probationary period. I'm seeing now we're heading into the winter months, which is plowing months. I don't know if that's going to be something that he's going to be able to obtain in six months, so that'd be my first question.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you on that one. The other thing is, like, in the past, this has just happened, I think, this last year, in the past, we were able to go get his permit right away and then we could train him in-house and then he could just go get his, you know, go for, just schedule a test and we'd take him with the town truck for the test. This is my brother actually told me, so, you know, he's from Waimu and he just told me that they don't allow you to do that anymore. So he's going to go get his permit and then I think I'm going to have to sign up for a class. You're going to have to have so many training hours, so depending what classes are available and this and that, so it might turn into a little longer period than the six months.
So that's my first, that's my first question of concern. It's, I think it'd be unfair to Tyler?
Yep.
With that six month criteria, so would twelve months be better?
That would definitely help. Yep.
And then unless it's, you know, not up to him.
Give him some time, you know, study and all that stuff.
If things happen, so, I mean, we could definitely extend that schedule if that's okay with the board. I think twelve months, six months is never going to happen again, especially with the winter months coming upon us. And then it says you will also be expected to acquire a D1 license within eighteen months or higher. I think that's going to be tough, because I know where you have to go through the classes that you need to go through for D1, for the, that's a water license, drinking water license. So I think eighteen months is too short of a timeframe as well, given the facts that we're shorthanded in DPW now. Mr. Manad will tell you that. Tyler coming on board is kind of filling a void, so for Dan to be able to schedule for classes for D1, classes for CDL, I just think it's going to be difficult. And that's something for the director, Dan, to manage, so I would, I would like to open that period up to maybe twenty-four months as well, an extra six months on that one as well.
Okay.
If that's okay. I mean, I just think it's common sense that we need to give Dan the flexibility with his shortage of manpower. Tyler coming on board, thank you Tyler for coming on board, but I think it just adds a little flexibility for Mr. Manad and Tyler to go through in the way that D1 classes are. I was talking to Cath about it, you don't know when it's going to come up, when the tests are going to be available, so just broaden it out.
So good. All right. Motion to appoint.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thanks Tyler.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Dan.
Good night.
Appreciate it.
See you, Dan.
New business, communications, something to us.
Yes. We have some guests.
Oh, okay. I see a guest popped in. Is that Representative Schmidt? I don't have my glasses on.
It is Chairman Wonar. My colleague, Rep. Strauss, is not here yet.
Okay. Then we'll hang tight for a little bit.
Well, thank you very much.
All right.
I appreciate that.
Thanks. Let's see, we've got our election day, election votes. From Pam, it passes a copy of the recent passed new laws, one of which transferred the authority of the police chief to the Board of Selectmen to appoint, schedule the election day police office for each precinct. There's a vote I asked the Board of Selectmen to make at one of their meetings, which will allow them in turn to appoint the chief to assign the election day police officers. Yeah, so we're just kicking this back to the chief, I guess. All right, so there's a motion. The Board of Selectmen delegates the authority given to them in Chapter 92 of the 2022 Acts to the police chief to assign four police officers or, at the very least, the minimum of three police officers at the polling location, daring to preserve order and to protect the election officers and voters from interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to the fall elections. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is...
Mr. Chairman, I request that we pass over on this. We interviewed some people, but I didn't consider the poll large enough. A couple people that were scheduled to be interviewed pulled out or did not, or no-shows. And it's for the outreach worker at the COA and a discussion with the director. We would like to interview a couple more people down the list.
Okay, so motion to table. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Turn this over to Mr. Kelly. It looks like we have the potential firm to conduct our audit services. Mr. Kelly?
Under the procurement law, you do not have to go out. I still advise we go out, but since we parted ways with the former auditor, just so there's no break in service, I would request that you look this over and then we bring it forward after town meeting to hire the Robert Brown as certified public accountants. They've done a number of the communities in the area. They were able to pick us up and I've worked with them in other places in the past when I worked for the state auditors office. It's a very competent firm. Their bid is for $31,000, which is $9,000 below what Melanson was going to, or Melanson was going to charge us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The only question that I have in the letter says if the town is required to obtain a federal grant audit in compliance with OMB Circular 8133, a fee adjustment would be necessary in order for the town to be subject for this requirement, the town would have to spend 750 federal grants. So I'm assuming that opers, federal grants?
You do it now and Melanson charges you extra for it. It's usually a couple thousand.
So that's what I wanted to know, is what is Robert Brown, the second, fee adjustment? Because we know again, oppo money and it's in excess of 750.
Oh, you, just because of the school, you have to do it almost every year. And I can talk to them, but the usual fee is a couple thousand. It's a single audit, they call it.
Okay. We can get some number attached to that in a commitment, so within $1 million, $2 million? If we got $3 million, does the fee escalate?
No, it's a single audit. It's standard with the feds.
If we find out what that additional fee is, I think, what is?
I just guess that you look it over, if Mr. Brown's firm is acceptable to you, then we can bring him in. I think you should meet him. Obviously, we had our difficulties with the past auditor, and I would like to make sure that this gentleman and his firm is acceptable to the board and will work with the board and understand what the board wants and what the board has put up with in the past.
I spoke to a couple of communities that are on the references and they come with very good references, so I don't think that should be an issue.
Okay. All right, very good. So this motion to table. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item is St. Francis School. They're doing a fundraiser Friday, October 21st at Silverford Farm. They'd like to have a one-day license for beer and wine, to do a beer stamping.
Motion to approve for one-day, like a license?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is same thing with, it's like diamond in the rough. They'd like to have one-day license, wine and malt beverages for the sangria lady, and that would take place on October 23rd, 2022.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's like we got some fun stuff going on in Acushnet that we can, these times. All right, next item. Gentlemen, as you know, we've got a little bit of a gap. We had our two maintenance workers who have moved on to, like pastors, so Mr. Kelly has come forward with a proposal to hopefully fill that gap. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, through the board, I have two individuals who are picking up slack. One of them is an individual who worked seasonally for us and he is able to work now until the spring. He's in school, but it's virtual. He can work under twenty hours. The other individual worked for the cemetery and he, cemetery's out of funds to pay him and he can work nineteen hours also. And so we've got the two of them overlapping, but I would like to go forward if it is the wish of the board to explore whether we can hire a maintenance foreman to coordinate all this. I put the budgetary issues before you and I'm looking to go to the Messiah Career Center in New Bedford. I've got a meeting there to discuss with them. They can advertise on all platforms, whereas we'd have to, with every platform, either pay a fee or re-advertise. They advertise across the board. What they do need is the job description and that's why I put a couple drafts in with the, your faculty for the board to review.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think if the board reviews the job descriptions, I think it's a bit overkill for the amount of money that's the, for the pay. I don't know of too many people that are experienced in HVAC, plumbing, electrician, custodian and a mechanic for the amount of money that we're paying. So I think, you know, I don't know if that's all the required, what we need for somebody that we actually had before as a working foreman, Mr. Alexander. It was mostly carpentry work and to keep up and maintain buildings and the things of the likes, no plowing obviously on the town properties, the town-owned properties, lawn service and things of the nature, but I think that if you try to advertise for an individual like this, it's like we're in NASA, looking for people in rocket science for the amount of money. I don't believe you're finding that person, so I'd just be, I would just edge on the side of caution, be careful.
The advertisement would not be the job description. The job, this is a standard job description for that position. You include everything in it so that someone can never say, "Not my job."
Yeah.
But the ad will be entirely limited.
Yeah, it's just looking at it and you, I don't know many people that, I don't know many people that pick a bill for the amount, you know, what does it come out to, like 50 Gs? You're not finding anybody, it's a waste of time and advertising. I mean, if you could find somebody that can fit the bill to a certain amount of that criteria, great, but we're mostly, you know, maintenance of the buildings and, you know, landscaping things and, you know, carpentry and stuff like that. We have plenty of people in town that are electricians and plumbers. If we have a situation emergency, we, I call them up and they'd be more than happy to accommodate us as they have been in the past. So I just want to err on the side of caution and you don't want to be creating too much of a conflict with this position versus other union positions in town versus salary ranges. So just edging on the side of caution on that.
The ad would be only a paragraph at most.
Yep. So is there any issue going forward with the advertising?
To use Mass Hire Career Centers for a wider audience.
Do you have to have this discussion with the union? I thought you mentioned something about having a conversation with union before we go out and advertise, before they say, "Well, wait..."
Well, that's for the job description.
And with the job description comes a salary, right? So I think that that...
The salary's already set by the union contract. The, and I forwarded these to the shop steward and he had no objection to them.
Okay, great. All right, so see what you can get? So motion to advertise?
I hope to get something in this market.
The label market's tight.
Yep. All right, so what do we need here, Mr. Kelly? Is it a motion to go forward?
Just authorize me to go forward with Mass Hire Career Centers and to show them these drafts and then we put together an ad for them to put out over their system.
So, let me see, it's a motion to go forward the advertising.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next item is, this is kind of old business, new business, but as you know, we got a boat. We were very fortunate to receive a donation of a boat, so now we have to get rid of the other one, the one that we're getting rid of, which is a 1972 Bossley Whaler. So we need a motion to put it into surplus.
Mr. Chairman, I think, usually when we do, and I know the chiefs knew it, being chief and have to have this authorization, but we do have some codes that we can deem it as and when you look towards the back, I mean, I went over and I looked at that boat, the snares wheels inside of a laundry basket, the boat's, the motor seized, it's really just decrepit, so I would deem it salvage. I don't know about this other one, the other quarry, it looks like some kind of quarry boat, I don't even know what that one is. I'm assuming that it's in the same condition, if not worse.
I think there's reference in the trailer as well.
Yeah, it's all junk, the wheels on the trailer, I mean, so.
I looked at bearings as well.
I think, can we?
Maybe Howie wants it, Captain Barney's, he can.
If we just deem it as salvage, which is basically worthless on the thing, right? I think in, in a good spirited gesture to the call firefighters and our full-time firefighters, can we just see if there's anybody there that wants it in the spirit of goodwill and let the call firefighters and the full-time firefighters, if there's more than one individual that may want this boat, for whatever reason, some of our call firefighters have been here for thirty, forty, fifty years.
Some are trained on that boat.
Right, so, I mean, if that's the case and only one person wants the boat, it's an easy go. If they want and there's multiple, let it be a vote of the call firefighters and full-time staff is to say, "Who's going to get the boat?" Right? Let it kind of become a little thing for them and it's a token of our appreciation for all our call firefighters and full-time firefighters.
So do we have a motion to deem it salvage?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, one of the town administrators report, we got a lot going on, Jamie.
As far as the town meeting goes, the CPC budget, I've been in communication with the moderator and town council and we've come up with the two or three ways to go forward with the CPC article. I've talked to the chair of the CPC and I've also had a meeting posted for the Board of Selectmen in the CPC before the town meeting. I do not believe it'll be necessary to amend the budget for the CPC to amend it. They might do it before that and that was at Mr. Blake's insistence. Otherwise, we'll separate the article on designated funds from the others. And we've, I've met with the chairman of the planning board, I'm meeting with them again to discuss his presentation on his articles and he'll be presenting directly to the town meeting. Also for the 24 budget, I put, asked the department, adds for capital project wishlist and hopefully we can use that to start doing a five-year capital improvement plan. I've met with the subcommittee of the golf course numerous times, we're going over the budget, the financial estimates, capital estimates, and we're working well together. We've talked about the building of facilities department and then you have a list of some of the things that are being taken care of now and are on the list. Treasurer Collector, we have someone that we will be talking to in the next week to fill in as interim treasurer collector when Marilyn leaves. Marilyn will be here, so there's an overlap so that one person can brief the other if the board decides that they'd like to have this individual come in. She has experience in banking earlier in her career, worked for the city of Boston in the treasury and then worked for various towns. I'm going to be working with the town clerk on having her get up to speed after town meeting, so dog licensing, because her software won't work and we have to be prepped by January. The EMA director's retiring, as you know, and I recommend, in consultation with him, that the board consider reassigning the duties to the fire chief, if not on the long term when he leaves in January until the board decides how they want to proceed.
When do we got to, I mean, I think we should have that discussion sooner than later because, you know, when the time comes, Mr. Gasper, you, you're the, are you the Selectmen's representative for the fire department on the unit?
Negotiation.
Yeah. Do you want to have that conversation? You know, Mr. Kelly, or you want him to just?
It's not a negotiation.
Well, I understand that, but if Mr. Farland, we haven't, this is the board, right? We haven't decided whether or not we want to do this. I'm not saying it's a negotiation, but Mr. Gasper has represented the board, if we want to have a Selectmen's involvement, or we can just say, "Mr. Kelly, you go talk to Chief Farland about it."
I think Mr. Bergeron, Mr. Chief Farland talked before they came to me.
Okay, well, listen, then let's not, let's bring it up for a vote at some point, sooner than later, and let's not wait until January.
Would you want to hear from Chief Farland?
Yeah, I'd like to.
At the next meeting?
Sure.
Or the first?
After town meeting. Just do it after town meeting.
Kind of a coordination, because Jerry's technically the director, then we have an assistant director, which is Ed Karen over there, so it's kind of that coordination, communication between Mr. Farland now and Mr. Karen, with the duties aligned, responsibilities and things of the like. I mean, Mr. Karen's phenomenal at EMA, as was Mr. Bergeron, so Mr. Bergeron's, you know, he's not going anywhere, thank goodness, but, you know, those responsibilities will kind of taper off into the fire chief.
Have a transition plan. Yeah, I'd like to see what that looks like and assuming that that's the direction that the board wants to go.
Would you want it in the first meeting in November?
It's kind of, it's kind of important, as the chairman's alluding to, just because we don't know when storm-related issues come up and that coordination needs to make sure that we know.
Yep.
Who's doing what during blizzards and, you know, storm-related closures and things like that with council on agents, so they all come into play on that. So I agree with the chairman that that coordination needs to happen sooner or later in that communication, so.
Agree, agree. Needs to be seamless. Right, so the offer stands, if Mr. Gasper, if you want to get involved in that conversation, is our, again, it's not a negotiation, but in the, in the spirit of consistency with that department?
Sure.
I don't want to talk to Mr.?
Sure.
If not?
Yep.
No, it's fine. All right.
Seeing you work off, we have two folks that are working now and they've been assigned to the clerk's office. As far as our issues go, I'm going to be talking to our consultant after town meeting as far as how we process assigning bonuses, money and what is necessary for the board's action on that.
We start having a real conversation on oppo, you know, the allocation of funds. I know that we went out for engineering, things of the like.
We haven't seen anything yet.
Okay, so I know that there was some discussion about an engineering firm that was the only one bitten on it and we'd be, before we start spending money on somebody to do engineering and take up an exorbitant amount of that money and then we don't actually have the money for the project, that wouldn't make any sense, right? So that all has to come before the board first and we should be getting an update soon so that we can plan for oppo the right way. Thank you.
I agree. We've discussed that in the past and we're just waiting to see if the, when the engineering firm comes in, what the parameters are they're talking about and then we'd have them come and present to the board. I've given the board a draft RFP for legal services in the past. A few folks want to go out for legal services. That's a consideration.
Right, okay, I'm just stopping you there. Gentlemen, if you had a chance to look at that RFP or not, but I would ask that, again, we put, that we put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
The next one?
After-town meeting.
Or November 7th?
Either or, whatever, but.
We might have DEP come in on the next meeting after the...
Either we want you to, we're okay with the RFP or not, but I think having these things hanging out there, it's been around for a while, let's get some action moving.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't even know that RFP was out there, so.
So if you put that on the agenda, call it the 7th, that's fine, whatever, doesn't matter to me.
Okay. I've, I've talked to NFP, who's our health insurance consultant, and their advice is to go out for an RFP on health insurance. That's what you pay them for, to write it and to go out and then come into the board and present the options. They say it's somewhere between six and eight to do public sector health insurance.
Well, how about we do this then, for the 7th, the meeting on the 7th, put on the agenda, any and all RFPs that you need our approval for, go out.
They, they don't go out until, on health insurance, until the end of January, beginning of February.
Okay.
Because Maya, being the big dog in town, doesn't even start theirs until the liability insurance. I've talked to a couple groups, group purchasing, groups other than what we use now, which is Maya and House St. we use now, which is Maya, and asked them if they'd be willing to consider, and we'll send them our loss records that we get from Maya, and they can look at it. The auditing services I talked to about Lake Street, I've heard nothing on that agreement out of the New Bedford City Council.
I do have a call-in to, you guys know who he is, Councilor Jarrettowski, who's the attorney for the city council. He's checking on the status of that. Hopefully we'll get that one.
Yeah, I've had a couple of conversations with a few different over at Apple Peach Festival, and I know that if solitude's going to do that, weed, bait and stuff, it's going to be done in like June or July.
Right, we've got to start moving that down.
We've got to be ready to go by that time. So it'd be nice if we could get that moving.
Well, there was even...
Wanting to get worse, so...
There was even talk about the DPW making sure there's some work done as far as so people don't slide into the...
Guide rails and getting all that stuff. It would be great if you can get the DPW to... I know they got road projects going on, but once that's done, get moving over there for the winter. Get those guide rails up and get those safety issues moving.
And I've got nothing to report on South Main Street.
Can you, before we jump over South Main Street, can you talk about, it keeps going into this, they keep saying this language, design planning phase and tentative town ownership understanding?
They are... The state is in a preliminary design stage, and once they get through that, they're going to want from the town an understanding document, a document that says that you're considering, not that you're locked in, but you're considering the proposal that the state is proposing in their, with their design on the decommissioning of the road. But until you get a preliminary design, you don't even know what they're talking about, right? Just in the last month, assigned a design plan.
Yeah. Actually, gentlemen, again, for the 7th, what I would say, we were South Main Street, because it will be, it is a negotiation, right? If it is at all, I think that's something that's worth going into an executive session on, so we can have a strategy to at least be prepared. If they come back, come to us with something, then we'll know what we're talking about, and, you know, at least we have a game plan. Because I know there's a lot of plans being talked about in the general vicinity, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in that regard if something comes back to us. All right, let's see. Future business, we've got a couple guests that have popped in, but I might as well just do this for future business. We have town meeting on October 17th, 7:00 PM. Board of Selectmen CPC on October 17th at 6:00 PM before the town meeting.
Potentially.
Potentially. And then a selectmen's meeting on October 25th at 4:00 PM. And then November 7th, we have 4:00 PM, which is a Monday, because Election Day is on the 8th.
We are, we've invited DEP to come in and explain to the selectmen their Title V nitrogen potential regulation.
All right, well, I guess it's appropriate that our state representatives are popped in. Representative Schmidt and Strauss, you guys have been here before, but thanks for stopping in.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate your giving us a brief moment. We're here, and good afternoon, Town Administrator Kelly. We're here just to formalize the little, well, not so little, to formalize the earmark that we were able to get for the town recently. It's another $25,000 earmark, and I wish Bill would join me here. The first one we got a couple of months ago was to help you...
Jesus.
How's that? That's nice.
City of Dorset on the...
We'll do a photo op. We'll take a photo.
The first one we got a couple of months ago was to help you finish the town...
Master plan.
The town master plan, yes. But then in further conversations with Administrator Kelly, we found that you're concerned about the effect on town of the South Coast Rail train station that is going to be located about a mile from the border of the town, and that you need funds to help plan for what's going to happen to the town. And so we were able to jump on that and get another earmark for you, this one another $25,000. And we're here just to, if you will, via this, present that to the town.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Well, thank you for your work, Representative Schmidt and Representative Strauss. And what I understand, we've had communications with the office of Representative Strauss regarding T-bond, you know, for Slocum Street, right?
Sure. And just to recap, and this had come up when we were here back in the spring, and there was a question from one of the members of the board about that Slocum Street project. So that was, and is, a million and a half, $1,500,000 earmark that a former colleague of ours, Bob Kuzera, had gotten several years ago in a prior bill for Slocum Street work. We were coming up, because bonds have a certain authorization time period, so we were getting close to that again. So in this summer's transportation bond bill, which the governor, Governor Baker signed at the end of July or early August, we reauthorized and extended that Slocum Street project. So the money is still available for the town, and it's something I'm sure everybody looks forward to.
So I guess the $1.5 million question is, how do we access that money? Does it have to be released by the governor, or is that you as chair of the Transportation Committee can help execute?
So here's the important thing about bond bill authorizations. A lot of people think, "Oh, well, they're not real," but they are real. And but what is then required to make the project real is specific work where kind of it's a joint effort, local officials, legislators, working with Mastod to say, "What's the first stage?" Doesn't have to all be spent at once. It can be a multi-year effort. So if, whatever the details are, if there's early design work, planning work, permitting work, that's a check that can be drawn. So if the town said, for instance, "We're going to need X to get engineers working on this, and it looks like we're going to need a certain amount of money," then it's our job to then work with Mastod to get that money authorized and released. So it can be spent bit by bit over time. If there's a match from other sources, great. So my suggestion, we talked, Paul and I talked about this earlier, is to maybe double back with Mr. Kelly and find out, you know, specifically, is there early money that will make this, you know, more real?
That's probably like the number one road project we have in town, right? It's been going on for 20 years, so we can really lean into that. And, you know, you was chairman of the Transportation Committee. I think we get a little bit, good luck in that regard with the redistricting. So we really appreciate your help in making that happen. I know Representative Schmidt, I've seen your elbow grease at work, and I'm sure you'll be on the case as well. So if we can work with Mr. Kelly, that'd be great.
Okay. I'll check back later this week with you, and, you know, we'll all stay in touch on getting that advanced.
Thank you. Great. I don't know if you guys want to do a quick photo?
We would be delighted to.
We would not say no.
All right, great. Oh, you start.
Select would in the middle, holding the chairman out.
In the middle.
And us in a supporting role on the wings.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
We wish the baseball team...
Is that how this works?
Yeah, it was.
All right, I want to go to the bank and try to cash.
Quickly.
Got to get that through the little... All right, gentlemen, that's it for current business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Those in favor?
Aye.